Going to call the council meeting back to order. Roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. City Attorney, is our closed session report?
Yes, Mayor Currie, just briefly. In regards to the closed session item related to threat to public services or facilities, I just wanted to clarify that there is no imminent threat to any public services or facilities.
Okay, thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilmember Petros, and then remain standing for the invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Our God, we your children gather today, and we ask for your wisdom and your guidance as we endeavor to lead this community. We ask that you would imbue us with humility, with empathy for our citizens and for the issues and problems which they face in their day-to-day lives, and give us wisdom in the decisions we make today. In your name, amen. We have no presentations this evening, so we'll go directly to notice to the public.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for council announcements or matters which council members would like place on a future agenda.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardner.
I have nothing.
Mr. Petros.
I have nothing.
Mr. Hill.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Daigle.
Yes, I do. Well, the city of Newport Beach, we received a Rose Award for our pension reform program from the Orange County Taxpayers Association. Mayor Protém Rochelle was also at the dinner, an awards ceremony held at the Island Hotel. So I wanted to discuss the award, let you know that we're keeping at it, and tell you this is an issue of compensation adjustment. The city's pension reform program is consistent with OC Tax's mission statement. Taxes and tax-supported programs must be fair, understandable, cost-effective, and good for the economy. Our application also demonstrated measurable results of taxpayer benefit, tax savings, or government waste cutting. And here at the city, we've been working to turn this ship around one bite at a time. While it's great the city received this recognition, it's what we should be doing as standard operating procedure. Our initiatives preceded any reforms by the state, and I'd like to read for you some excerpts from our application. Among our initiatives, the labor contracts were negotiated with nearly all bargaining units. The labor contracts adopted on 2012 and 13 provide for employees paying the full member contribution. We created lower benefit tiers for new employees and eliminated employer-paid member contributions for all but one unit. Police and fire MOU include a formula that requires safety employees to contribute an amount equal to 26.5 percent of total retirement costs, and they're moving towards a 50-50 split with the employer of the city. In April 2013, the council took pension reform one step further and elected to accelerate payments towards the unfunded liability, thus paying it over a fixed shorter time period and potentially avoiding $113 million of interest expense over the next 30 years. There are additional reforms. The names are a little bit obscure, but they all contribute to the bottom line. At times, our financial partner, CalPERS, isn't very precise and tends to be overly optimistic. You see now in the news that some cities are going over the financial cliff. We've been able to put ourselves back on a reasonable playing field. These initiatives and this recognition is the result of difficult decisions made by the city council and supported by hard work, trust in the work of fellow colleagues, unified positions, unanimous decisions. And some of these decisions were particularly difficult because we had to undo past decisions by prior city councils. An essential ingredient to this success was to have the cooperation of leadership management. Three of the council members who've become very educated about public employee compensation will be termed out next year. This is a loss for our residents. The city's successful approach was due in part to the council having the fortunate opportunity to become informed about a very complicated system. Underpinning our efforts was keeping eye on the ball about total compensation, no matter how many categories of pay there are. Our approach was to work through a process that was successful in meeting our goals. We enlisted the help of an independent professional negotiator to help us achieve this level of sophistication. We had employees willing to make concessions necessary to achieve our goals. And with respect to our employees, our workforce, we appreciate and really want stable and courteous workers that want to have a long-term association with the city. And if I were to take Public Works as an example, they know the psychology of the city. They understand our planning philosophy. They have an apprenticeship to learn the roads and the curb and gutter, and the wastewater system, and the plan check, and how to project manage our construction projects. We have employees who interact with our residents and businesses. This is all in the interest of our residents to have long-term employees who are courteous and stable service. A public sector is not an environment for people seeking money advancement, but at the end of service, they do receive a pension. As to taxpayers, it's an award from a taxpayer group, and when we mention pension reform, its actions don't stop with the activities for which this award was received. It's incumbent upon those concerned about this issue to become informed about public safety, compensation subtleties. And please understand that these compensation and pension issues have considerable impact at the city's state and federal level. So that was the award and some of the background on why we received that award. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Henne.
I have nothing.
Mr. Selich.
Two items. First, tomorrow at 12:30 to 2:30, the general plan, local coastal plan implementation committee's going to be meeting in the Newport Coast Meeting Room. We're going to be reviewing the coastal zone boundary and some potential adjustments to that. Take a look at the schedule and the coordination of the implementation plan with our other planning efforts, including the land use element. And then also, we're going to take a first look at the implementation plan chapters and for further review at future meetings. And that's 12:30 to 2:30. Usually, we meet at 3:30, but this is 12:30 to 2:30 in the Newport Coast Meeting Room. And then the second item is, I'd like, on a future council agenda, to schedule a discussion of the possibility of changing our practice on business license for independent real estate agents working in brokerage offices. A couple of months ago, I noticed that the city of Long Beach changed their practice, and I looked into it further and found that a number of other cities have done it also, and there seems to be some good reasons to do that. So I'd like to take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. A couple of things. On July 27, Saturday, I'll be hosting my second Meet the Mayor at the Newport Coast Community Center, beginning at nine o'clock. I encourage you to come out, and if you have questions about the city or issues you'd like to discuss, I look forward to visiting with you and talking about them. On August the 6th, the Spyglass Hill residents will host a Take Back the Night program in Spyglass Hill Park from 4:00 to 7:00. I encourage you, those in that neighborhood, to come out for that. And we received a very nice note from the Jasmine Park community thanking us for our assistance with their homeowners association in the area of water conservation, an area where the city of Newport Beach happens to be a leader. So with that, let's move on to public comment. Or, excuse me. Yeah, public comment. Oh, here we go. Consent calendar. Hello.
Public comments on consent calendar.
Yeah, too long.
Public comments are invited on consent calendar, items 1 through 15. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. To the extent that any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council has received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Okay, thank you. Does any council member have an item they'd like to remove from the consent calendar? Councilmember Daigle.
Yes, I'd like a staff report on item number three, please.
Mr. Henne.
I have nothing to pull, Mr. Mayor, although I do need to note a recusal for myself on item number five in that I live within 500 feet of that project.
Thank you. Mr. Selich.
No items.
Councilmember Gardner.
12 and 15.
Mr. Petros.
No items.
Mr. Hill.
No items.
And I have no items. At this point, we will take public comment on items on the consent calendar that were not pulled. Does anyone have any public comment?
Mayor Currie and members of the council, my name is Jim Moser. I just wanted to make a quick comment about item number eight. This very thick item is a request for $581,000 for a fire truck, which I assume is well justified, and the report details all the parts and specifications of a fire truck, which is very impressive, and I appreciate seeing it printed out, but I'd just like to point out that paper itself is combustible, and I think we could mitigate that danger and save a few trees if we simply provided a link to a place on the city website where we could see the complete specifications. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back. Is there -- yes, Pam? We're coming up. Thanks. Okay, so do you have a motion on the consent calendar?
Move the balance of the consent calendar. I apologize.
All right, so entailed in that motion is we're pulling items three, recording Councilmember Henne's abstention on number five, and we're pulling 12 and 15, and the motion is for the balance. Please vote.
I'm sorry, who made the second?
I did.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you. Item three.
Hi, I'm Rob Houston from the city manager's office, and a question was brought forth by Councilmember Daigle, just to give a little bit of background to the resolution before you tonight. It's a resolution to -- our intention of the city to enter into an operating agreement for the management of the city's oil properties. A little bit of background, the city does operate 16 oil wells within the city limits located in the west Newport. We've been operating that for many years, but the revenue from that oil production goes to the tidelands. And so what's happened over the last number of years, council's taken a lot of steps to secure the resources and set up a maintenance plan to look after those tideland resources. It's led to an analytical look of all the resources and revenue sources for the tidelands. It led us to look at the oil well reserves and to see if the operations there could be enhanced in any way. Last year, we conducted a report from Nellin Sewell, which is a consultant oil expert team. They produced a report on the reserves, on the future possibilities, what could be done there, and definitely gave some advice that there could be additional revenues that could come from that operation, and that's led to this resolution to inquire with other firms that would be interested in partnering with the city to see if there are any new ideas or revenue opportunities that a partnership could enhance the revenues for the tidelands.
So is there a general sense that resources are underutilized and not being exploited?
Generally, what's happened is there's been a conservative maintenance operation plan for the oil reserves in a lot of oil operations that, say, a private firm might do. They might invest more money, take a little more risk, and invest more money, say, to complete wells, do things like that, and the city's been a little more conservative. So the thought is, is that perhaps a private partner might give us a plan that could secure our current revenue streams but have a chance for an upside.
Sounds like a good idea to me. Thank you.
All right, is there a motion on this item?
I'll second it.
Motion and second. Is there any further -- is there any public comment on this matter? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. If you have further discussion, seeing none, please vote.
The motion carries, 7-0.
Thank you. Item 12, Councilmember Gardner.
Just a couple of questions on this, nothing major. I have no problems with it, but it lists all the parks. Small pocket parks, like, say, at the end of Jasmine, they're not -- how do we handle those? Is this a sort of an as-needed or basis?
Hi, Councilmember Gardner. No, not as needed. They're scheduled parks. We do include those when we're doing some of the larger parks in the area. We don't list them out, all the different pocket parks, but if we're at the larger parks, say, every week, then we'll go by the pocket parks and handle those as well. But it is included in the total acreage. That's listed.
Okay. And then on the technical maintenance specifications, it talks about keep sidewalks free of algae where constant runoff occurs. And I'm wondering, could we, not part of the contract, but just ask them occasionally when they see things like this, to report the area so we could get our water conservation people in there and maybe see if there's a problem with constant runoff?
We can. We certainly can talk to them about that. Usually, when we see the algae on the sidewalks, we have an irrigation issue. So they'll not only clean the sidewalk, but then they'll fix the overspray of the sprinklers and those.
So they do so automatically themselves?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Once you scrub a sidewalk of algae once, you're going to try and fix it.
Okay, okay, good. And then it said clippings should be collected and removed unless otherwise directed. So do we do it -- because I remember, we decided at some point we were going to leave clippings on some of the areas. So this depends on what kind of park it is?
Exactly. And if clippings are such that, you know, we get clippings on pathways or a buildup of cut grass, we'll direct them to remove them. If we can mulch the clippings, or if it's such that we can use it as green waste or trail cover, you know, we'll do that. We try not to throw away any green waste, but we don't want lumps of cut grass either, especially on sports fields.
Obviously, on sports fields. And then just one question on the native and drought-tolerant park maintenance. It says all dead wood for nades will remain on the plant or where it has fallen. Do we have anything as far as our fire codes that when we do go in, and so we don't build up too much?
Yeah, I think the fire department bailed after their truck was approved, but we try not, you know, increase any fire hazard. What the goal is there is to keep nature parks or natural parks just that. You know, we don't want to rake them. We don't want to remove all the debris. We want to leave that stuff, especially if you get some of the limbs of trees and they line the pathways. It really does look good. It's a nature park. But if at any time we think that there's a buildup of dead debris, we certainly would notify the fire department and get their opinion on it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I move the item.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any public comment on this matter? Seeing none, please vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you. Item 15, Councilmember Gardner.
Yes, I think that the Arts Commission has a brief presentation, and I thought this was important to talk about because it's something we're proposing to do, something that the city hasn't done before, and I thought it was worth more discussion than simply being on the consent calendar.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kiff.
So, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'm going to ask Cynthia Cowell, the library director who oversees the arts program in the city, to start the presentation. And as Councilmember Gardner noted, the arts commissioners will speak about it, too. Thanks.
Hold on. All right, now it's on. Mayor and council, good evening. I'm Cynthia Cowell. I'm the library services director. We have before you an item that encompasses three parts. First, to talk with you about this very exciting opportunity to have a loan sculpture exhibit in the park, also to terminate an agreement with the Orange County Museum of Art, and also to adopt a budget amendment. So here to give a presentation from the Arts Commission's point of view are Carol Bowler and Caroline Logan, both arts commissioners.
My name is Caroline Logan. Carol Bowler and I are pleased to be arts commissioners for you in the city of Newport Beach, and thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. The members of the city council have expressed a wish to have high-level sculpture in the extraordinary new Civic Center Park as planned by our renowned park designer, Peter Walker. The Art in Public Places Ad-Hoc Committee has taken this to task and is proud to present for your consideration the Arts Commission's Sculpture in the Park Public Invitational 2014 to 2016 Sculpture Exhibition Project. Commissioner Bowler.
Mayor Currie, honorable council members, we wish to thank city manager Dave Kiff for his involvement, guidance, and in emphasizing that the city commission project may be modified if necessary to fit into an approved budget. This project is recommended, as recommended, can be tailor-made to best fit into any possible budget. It has the ability to be maximized, minimized, without a loss in quality. The initial sculpture park project recommendation officially approved by the Arts Commission is designed for 18 original high-quality sculptures to be installed throughout the length of the new Civic Center Park, drawing visitors to enjoy the entire park. The sculpture pieces would be on loan to the city for two-year period of time, opening with an exciting exhibition dedication celebration May of 2014, the one-year anniversary of our new Civic Center -- new Civic Center.
The Arts Commissioners based the concept of this project on similar hugely successful two-year cultural art sculpture projects throughout the country, forming it around our own city of Newport Beach. Comprehensive information was researched to develop detailed responsibility, marketing, costs, call to artists, publicity, docent, and self-guided tours, support materials, and a greatly detailed and workable timeline backing up from our city's dedication anniversary celebration itself.
A contracted project arts coordinator/site manager will start the process of a public artist call for entries as soon as possible, and will work with the Arts Commission's Art in Public Places Ad-Hoc Committee throughout. Eighteen pieces plus three additional alternatives will be selected for presentation to the entire Arts Commission, after which they will be brought before you, the city council, for review and your final approval.
Art has the great power to set us on our heels and show our very own inherent magic and what Newport Beach is all about. This high-level sculpture exhibit has been designed to celebrate the essential and a magic of Newport Beach, its maturity and culture, and growing aesthetic sophistication. This exciting pursuit of excellence can be expressed in our art with tradition, abstraction, or innovation. And as every undertaking needs a name, our sculpture exhibition is called "The Inherent Magic of Newport Beach."
To offer an idea of and place to visualize what you may see in the future sculpture park, the following slides illustrate a broad selection of the type of sculpture contemporary artists are creating. Two slides are included to give a picture of an installation and a working artist. Art is a nonverbal communication, so just enjoy a kinetic piece that works with the wind that we have on that hill. And wouldn't you like to be lying there right next to him on one of those hills? These are samples of what is possible.
The Arts Commission is once again proud to present for your consideration our Art in Civic Center Sculpture in the Park Invitational Exhibition Project, which, of course, can be modified according to your needs.
Commissioner Logan and I are pleased to have created this project for you, including all of its documents. I will be delighted to answer any questions you may have at the end of this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you both. Councilmember Gardner.
Did you -- your committee do the draft job description for the site coordinator? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Henne.
Yeah, just a question. One thing that I hope that we can accomplish with our new emphasis on enhancing our art and culture in the city is to create an arts community, or at least further enhance the arts community here in Newport Beach. And so did you give any thought, as you were thinking about this, about how to, I don't know, stimulate local entries, locally crafted entries, you know, resident artists submitting entries for this purpose?
Absolutely, and that's a very good question. We'd like to have this open to anyone in Orange County, but especially our own community would benefit from this. We're not looking internationally or even perhaps too national. After all, the honorarium is $2,500, and to move a piece of sculpture from, say, for instance, New York to -- from New York to here and back would eat that up very, very quickly. So already, we are looking at some artists that are creating in our own area. In fact, John Seaman's work was up on the screen. Also, Russell Jacques was working in his studio. We have Gwen Mural, who is from Venice, I believe. So we're looking in our area first, of course, but it will be open to the public as far as artists goes. It will not just be a closed invitation. Hope I've answered the question.
We also have in our project an artist registry, and we're hoping to expand the interest in art in the city by both the artists and the citizens. An important part of it.
Yes, as well as education that goes along with this, information, and the signage.
You? Councilmember Daigle.
Yes, thank you for all your hard work, and just a couple of questions for the city manager as to how this is going to roll out. I noticed the bulk of the expenses are with the site manager. Now, will that be under your supervision, under the direction of the city?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Daigle. I consider what the Arts Commission did, and they did it on their own, which was terrific. They came, they looked at other programs, and they came up with a proposal, and I thought it was a really wonderful concept, and we're really excited about it. With that, we still need to put it through the city's own functions, including purchasing and other things. And I expect if you folks like this concept tonight, we'll go back and work with them closely on the budget side of things. If you accept the cap that I'm proposing, I think we can look at different ways of accomplishing the same goal that they'd like to accomplish. So we didn't want to -- we wanted them to give their, you know, their unfettered So, we didn't want to, we wanted them to give their, you know, their unfettered thoughts to you, so you could react to it and hopefully bless and enjoy this program. So, details to be determined.
Great, well, thank you. And then, um, I noticed or heard that the council would be able to vote on any selection, so we would have ultimate say over what pieces go into the...
I think that's part of the core of their concept, yeah.
Okay. And then, my final question is, is this, did this funding originate with development agreements? Is that kinda where it's coming from?
This is actually not part of the, uh, the plan that, um, Mayor Curry had worked on, 'cause that was for permanent installations, and indeed is intended to be started once the development agreements are signed. We have not had a development agreement executed since that time, so the proposal is to take these funds from fund balance left over at the end of last year.
Mr. Petros?
Mayor Curry, um, I too think that this is a wonderful direction, and I'm just, I'm encouraged by the fact that it did come out of the Arts Commission organically. A, a couple of questions that I had, though. On the, uh, the MOU, setting aside the MOU, uh, the correspondence and the staff report would indicate that that was mutual consent. There is nothing, though, that would preclude future collaborations with AKMA or the relationship. It hasn't in any way damaged that relationship.
Correct. I think we have, still have a really good relationship with AKMA.
Fantastic. And then, finally, th- this is for the first year, there's an anticipation of a second, and, and who knows what happens after that. Could, is there an opportunity to, at year's end, evaluate this? I didn't see anything in there where we could come back and see how, how the expenditures were put together, how they were put out, how effective this was, did it go well, were the pieces moved properly? I, I'd like to see something at, at, either as part of the budgetary cycle, or at the end of the year, the first year, we get a chance to evaluate how effective and efficient this went.
We'll make sure that happens.
Thank you.
All right, let me, uh, Mr. Selig. Thank you. With the, um, procedures that's, that you're gonna have to implement as, as staff on this, is the, uh, is the May of next year date achievable, do you think, for the, for the recommendation you're putting forward?
I think it is, yeah. Yeah, I think, I think the Arts Commission actually put together a fairly good timeline in those regards that we can stick to. Maybe a little bit different in terms of the consultant services, but I think we can keep to that.
Um, I'd just like to say that I'm really excited about this. I think the Arts Commission's done a terrific job on this. The Building Committee, we had asked the landscape architect to come up with a master plan for a sculpture garden in the park, uh, which, which we have, and, you know, we had the agreement with AKMA, which didn't quite work out the way that, that we wanted, but it is, has been stated, we still have further opportunities with them, but this is an opportunity to, uh, do a program that's been done in other cities successfully and be a great enhancement to, to our parks. So, really wanna thank the Arts Commissioners for all their hard work on it.
Well, I would, I would second those, uh, those comments, and I did have an opportunity to talk with Dennis Sekes, who's the Executive Director of the museum. They simply don't have the inventory of appropriate, uh, sculpture that we would need for, for the park at this point in time, and, uh, they recognize that, but they are going to be, I think, good partners with us in the future as we look for other installations. And I think this is a great, a great step forward for the city to enhance our community. I just came back from, uh, our sister city visit in France, and I just had some time to be in England, and, you know, there's public art everywhere you turn around there, and it helps enhance those places and makes them very, very special. Uh, and, uh, I, I would just echo what's also been said, sort of the details are yet to be worked out. We have the city's procurement and conflict of interest rules and everything else to apply here, and that's going to be done that way. Uh, so with that, if there's no other council comments, let me open it up to public comment. Is there anyone in the public who'd like to speak on this matter? Please come forward.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Curry and members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher, and, uh, thank you, Mayor Curry, for explaining about the Orange County Museum program, 'cause Attachment One in, in the staff report shows the plan that we had paid for from Peter Walker Associates identifying the locations, and I thought we all understood we had this plan where there was gonna be a rotating display of sculpture from, from AKMA at those locations. It sounded like a very good plan to me, and I never heard a clear explanation of why it had withered away and disappeared. As to this particular plan, and as the, both you and the City Manager said, details to be determined. I, I hope you're not pinning this down, 'cause the recommendation of the action is a little vague here, and giving, leaving the City Arts Commission some latitude as to exactly how this will be implemented. One idea that I don't think has been thoroughly discussed by them yet is how it gets down to the candidates for sculpture that come before the City Council for final approval. We heard about a site manager, curator, something, working with this ad hoc committee. Every time you hear "ad hoc," that means it's kind of a private public not involved, even though it's public art. And I think the idea that, since this is, we heard it's an open invitation, it's kind of a contest to be chosen for one of those, and I think the public should, would be more interested in the result if they felt that they were participating more in the selection of what is there and actually reflects the community's taste, rather than perhaps the more sophisticated taste of the curator. And then, uh, finally touching again on the, the comment from Councilwoman Dagel, uh, I kinda thought our new policy, public arts in cultural facilities to be paid for out of developers' fees, got rushed through a little too quickly and perhaps with not enough thought. And although this is not permanent art, the idea could be a permanent idea with changing pieces in it. You know, it seemed to me that, although not permanent, it's certainly public art, and our policy says "public arts cultural facilities," says it will be the source of funding for public art. Perhaps that should be revisited sometime, whether this kind of activity could properly be funded out of that fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Is there a motion?
I'll move the action.
Second.
The action, and this is with the budget recommendation of the City Manager. All right, please vote.
The motion carries unanimously, seven-zero.
All right, public comment?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay, ma'am, you can be first.
Um, yeah, um, I was com-
Please state your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, Barbara Bailey.
Give me the microphone.
Over here, am I better? Okay, Barbara Bailey, 1001 Dover Drive. And, um, the reason I'm here, I shouldn't disappear, um, is that I have been in contact with the building inspection and also the code enforcement departments, and I have a condominium that has water intrusion and mold in the common area walls, and I won't go into the long details of everything. But in the, um, I was trying to see if the city could, you know, do some enforcement about problems with the structure and allowing the water in and, you know, where it's coming in. And the, um, uh, the California Health and Safety Code, Section Part 1.5, the Regulation of Buildings for Human Habitat- Use for Human Habitation, and, um, it's, uh, starts at 17910 in the Health and Building Code, and it's got several things in there that, um, how, um, it defines who's supposed to enforce this, is basically cities and counties, because those are the entities, and, um, that the enforcement's supposed to have a diligent, I'm quoting from this, "diligent effort to secure compliance, including response to a complaint," and it goes into about enforcement. And, um, I just would like some help.
All right, well, ma'am, if you can, any visitor with, uh, Ms. Brandt over here, uh, our code enforcement officer's not with us tonight, but she can give you a contact name, and we'll be in touch with you tomorrow, and get right on it.
Be fine, and where do, you want this in the box?
Sure. Thank you. Thanks for coming down. Any other speakers on public comment? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment period, and we will come back for oral reports from councilmembers on committee activities. Councilmember Gardner?
I have nothing.
Mr. Petros?
None.
Mr. Hell?
Uh, you, excuse me, you heard earlier this evening from, uh, Council, Councilwoman Dagel about the award, excuse me, the city won from the Orange County Tax Association in the Roses and Radishes Program, as they put out each year. I would just like to add a couple of thoughts to that. As stated before, Newport Beach won, uh, as one of the winners of the Rose Awards for the benefit, employee benefit restructuring program that, excuse me, we executed. We, um, hear often, uh, from individuals, thank goodness, not many of them in the city, but they do like to write and complain how we are overstaffed and we do not deal with our employees correctly with respect to wage and benefit and total compensation. And I think this award is important to acknowledge that we are recognized, in fact, for the accomplishments that we have made in that particular area. I'm very proud to note that I was the only individual that evening that received two awards on behalf of two agencies. We not only won the award for the city of Newport Beach, uh, but I also received the award for the transportation corridor agencies for the work that we have done there. I had, I chaired the 73 Toll Road Authority, and, uh, based upon the models that we had used in Newport Beach, uh, I was able to work with the, uh, total compensation packages at the TCA to accomplish the same kind of goals, uh, that we did here. And so, I think that that is a very significant award that has been won by both Newport Beach and the Toll Road Authority.
Thank you. Councilmember Dagel?
We, perhaps we could trademark our approach?
Sure.
Perhaps we could trademark our approach to pension reform it?
Here you go.
Couple announcements. Vector Control met. It was the eight-hundredth meeting of Vector Control. Really a well-run district. Uh, the grand jury that had convened said there was two well, very well-run districts, uh, Vector Control and the Cemetery District. Of course, not many complaints at that Cemetery District, so they kinda had a leg up. And then, secondly, as I serve on our SCAG Legislative Affairs Committee, and probably the, one of the really big items that are, that's gonna happen in the next eighteen months is the water bond. It was originally the water bond of 2012, um, but as things go, it's probably gonna be 2014. And looking at the reliability and the supply of our water, pretty, pretty pressing issue in the state of California, so keep you posted on that. As originally drafted, it has, it's almost $12 billion, of which two billion are earmarks, you know, groups such as Santa Monica Conservancy and Salton Sea, these kinds of big players, get earmarked, so probably some of that's gonna have to be taken out, I think, for voters to, uh, support the bond. But it is coming down the pipeline, and I'll keep you posted. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hinton?
Yes, the Finance Committee of Council met yesterday afternoon at 4:00 PM here in the Civic Center, and, um, the agenda was almost exclusively devoted to, uh, a review of the city's investment policy and its investment performance results, um, as well as some strategy change recommendations. And, uh, staff did a very good job, um, of analyzing all of this and preparing a number of recommendations, which were, um, thoroughly discussed at the meeting and, uh, which the committee unanimously recommended move forward to council for approval. Uh, so, another good meeting, and, um, plowing through more detail here on behalf of the city. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Selig?
Uh, the Land Use Amendment Amendment Committee met on July the 16th. It was our initial meeting, and, uh, had a rather modest turnout, a little bit surprising there. Uh, we went over the project objectives, our work program and our, and our schedule, and also took a look at the scope of what the project was gonna entail. And the thing we focused on most was the, uh, proposed areas of change to the land use, uh, um, element, and we had quite a bit of discussion on those. And, um, I guess I would just say that, uh, one of the things we were concerned about, that there may be other changes that, uh, folks might be thinking of, and so any landowner that had a land use element changed, uh, they should contact, uh, the Community Development Department and, uh, get their suggestions into them. Uh, we also talked a little bit about what the informational needs were gonna be. A lot of focus is gonna be on traffic, and, uh, stated throughout the meeting, one of the goals is that the, uh, whatever we do here will be traffic neutral, will not be generating any new traffic in the city. So, our next meeting is gonna be August the 6th, and again, it'll be in the Friends Room from 3:30 to 5:00.
Thank you. Uh, as you may know, I represent, uh, the city on the Orange County Sanitation District, and the sanitation district processes dry water runoff, or dry weather runoff, the stuff, the water that comes when you wash your car or over irrigate your lawn, uh, and they process it so that it doesn't go directly to the beach through the sewers and it, and cleans it up. They have, for a long time, had a cap of about four million gallons a day that, that they applied, but they would do that for free. But as the population has grown, we are now pushing up against that cap, and it could be, could have been very expensive for the cities, including Newport Beach, were that cap to remain in place. I'm pleased to report that the sanitation district has raised that cap to 10 million gallons a day, uh, which will allow, enable us to continue to process dry weather runoff, uh, keep, uh, bacteria off the beaches, and do so at no additional cost to the city. So, I, I'm very pleased with the sanitation district for, um, reaching that finding. Uh, next item is, um, Item 16. This is the Mobility Telecommunications Permit. It's recommended that this item be removed from the calendar. They're not quite ready to bring this item back to the city. Is there a motion for that?
I would so move, Mr. Mayor.
Second?
Second.
Is there any, a public comment on this matter? Seeing none, please vote.
Recuse myself. I didn't anticipate that.
Out of it.
With Councilmember Dagel recusing herself, the motion carries six-zero.
Thank you. Item 17, Planning Commission's Findings and Recommendations on Residential Lot Mergers.
Yes, Mayor Curry, members of the City Council, Patrick Offe, the Community Development Department. Um, this, uh, the issue of residential lot mergers was referred back to the Planning Commission earlier this year. The, uh, Planning Commission, uh, looked at the, uh, issue comprehensively, as evidenced by the slides that they, uh, looked at the various presentations we gave them over the three meetings. Uh, they, uh, looked at the history of lot mergers over the last five years, uh, looked at the typical lot mergers and the atypical lot mergers, and they did analysis of resulting floor areas, setback requirements, and, uh, lot coverage, uh, and considered a range of potential approaches, everything from doing nothing at all to, uh, maximum lot sizes to, uh, site development review. In the end, the, uh, commission found that there were no significant impacts to the quality of life in the community resulting from lot mergers. This is generally due to the relatively low number that we get, uh, average of two or three a year, and, uh, over the last five years, there's only one or two that have really been controversial. They recommended, uh, that no restrictions, uh, new no restrictions be enacted, mainly because it would create inequities over time, where you could have a situation where you would have potentially two lots side by side, but have two different types of development regulations. They proposed no changes to the zoning code, however, if the council was so inclined to do, uh, additional changes to the development standards for residential areas, they recommended that you look at considering having no net increase in the floor area allowed resulting from lot mergers, and that you limit those restrictions only to the older areas where the R1, RBI, and R2 zones are. And this is mainly because the other areas of the city are generally covered by lot coverage requirements, and, uh, they're not affected by FAR limits. Uh, they also recommend keeping existing side setback areas. At one time, it was considered making, uh, increasing the side yard setbacks to the, proportional to the size of the merged lot. Uh, and they also would like some consideration, given that if, um, a lot was substandard, but the merger would make it conforming or more conforming to zoning code standards, that some type of exemption be allowed. Um, one of their main findings is that the issue of lot mergers had to be considered independently of any future development. In other words, the merits of the individual lot merger had to be considered in isolation. And with that, they looked at the required findings in Title 19 dealing with lot mergers, and focused on, uh, Finding Number Five. And a copy of that text as, with the recommend changes is in your staff report. This is the compatibility finding, um, and they really wanted to stress the idea of compatibility with nearby lots and to provide additional guidance to decision-makers. And, uh, some of the things that would be looked at in those findings- And some of the things that would be looked at in those findings were deviations from the lot pattern of surrounding development, if the merger created unreasonable detriment to other properties in the area. It was consistent with the character and orientation of the lots, and finally conformity with zoning code standards dealing with lot width and lot size. With that, we are presenting the Planning Commission's recommendations and findings to you, and we are recommending that the associated code amendment, CA 2012-07, be removed from the calendar, and that staff be directed to return with an amendment to Title 19 to have the revised language for finding number five. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardner?
I was very surprised at this, because part of this came out of the Planning Commission in the first place. They had brought up a number of issues because of this one lot merger we had. And what I see is basically word changes. I don't see that it clarifies things. I don't see that it improves things. It just has the same amount of ambiguity to me. I had hoped that we would do with what we had initially suggested, which was to say that you can have-- you can combine the lots, but you can have that one amount, and that way you would have your-- how you did your configuration was up to you. You could have a wide yard on one side or something. We weren't going to be that specific. But so I would much rather see us go with the second recommendation than with the first.
Mr. Selich?
I've just got a question. Could you explain 5C? I was trying to figure out exactly how I would apply that if I had to.
Well, this is one of many findings that are required to approve a lot merger. And what the major issue that the commission struggled with was they felt that there was a lot of ambiguity in the current language, focusing mainly on the phrase of a lot being excessively large. And there was no real guidance. What did that mean? Did it mean for the block, for the neighborhood, for the city as a whole? And so they wanted to approach this issue of compatibility on a different level and to give more emphasis on the lots that were immediately adjacent to the subject property, the ones that are actually adjoining or adjoining the lot, and then moving out on the block and neighborhood level. And this is what these findings are intended to do, kind of look at these things on kind of a progressive scale, depending on the distance from the lots. And so essentially, what they're looking for is any type of configuration that from the lot merger that might be detrimental to the area, either in terms, you know, significantly deviates from the pattern of the area, if it creates building sites that might disrupt the development pattern of the area. And again, the issue of whether it brings the lot more into conformity or not, if it's we're dealing with substandard lots that if they're merged, you now have a lot that more is closely meets standards, or do you have two lots that are already meet today's standards, and it just creates a very large lot? And so this is what is intended to do, to kind of break that down, provide more guidance, give more things that could be considered by the decision maker when they make this compatibility finding.
So one of the issues we had with the controversial merger was that some folks were comparing, saying they should only look at the pattern of development within the block that the lot was in, and others were saying in the larger areas. So this gives the flexibility to look at the larger areas. Is that what it's saying?
Yes, but again, the commission wanted to emphasize that the closer you are to the property, the more consideration should be given on the pattern of development.
Where does that say that in here?
Well, there's several references to either adjacent or adjoining lots.
A and A, I see that. Okay. Okay, thanks, Patrick. Mr. Hill?
I'm sorry. Thank you. I read the Planning Commission's comments, which the minutes were quite detailed, and I found the comment that I identify with most was that, are we looking for a solution for which there is not a problem? Granted, when there is a problem, it's very controversial for the individuals that are immediately right there. But overall, from a city standpoint, we have not had these many issues. These issues will come before the Planning Commission and then the council, and we'll have to decide upon them based upon the information that's presented on an individual basis. I don't-- I agree with Councilwoman Gardner. I'm not sure these words are any more clear to me than what we have right now. So I-- me, I could vote for one or the other, it didn't make any difference, you know. They're both vague, and they're both going to have to be dealt with on an individual basis.
Mr. Eric?
Yeah. Well, one distinction, I think, that these new words draws more clearly is that the decision is to be made with regard to the lot and not with regard to development on the lots. Is that correct? I mean, that's-- that really makes it more clear that when you're looking at whether or not a merger is appropriate, we're talking about lots and not the development on the lots.
Yes, I think that was a consensus of the commission, that they have to look at the merits of the lot merger itself.
Yeah. And so I think that is a substantive difference with this language from what we have presently. Is that correct?
I would agree with that.
Yeah, yeah. So I think if there's anything to be accomplished, that might be, although I do agree that the new words themselves still leave an awful lot for, you know, interpretation. And I suppose that's by design at this point, because so many of these things are so fact-specific, you know, to the situation, and it's hard to draw generalities. One thing that I had-- that I did have some affinity for was this idea, when we merge two lots, and this is a zoning code issue, not a lot subdivision issue, but when you do merge two lots, that you end up with the same totality of setbacks that you had when they were separate lots, and to find some mechanism. So if there were-- if we were to go forward with a zoning code change direction, I'd still like to see if there's a way to come back with a mechanism like that.
So if we have a-- where we would have two lots, which each had three-foot setbacks on each side, they would now have to have 12?
Yeah, so effectively so that you don't lose the setback value of the interior setbacks of the two lots.
Yes, okay. And I would be fine with that. I mean, I think that would get me much-- make me much more comfortable with that, because that was one of the issues of just instead of having that big wall of a house, you still have some areas of green or to view through, not necessarily for private views, but just for the public aspect of it, of the openness that we don't want to lose.
Mayor Chris?
Mayor Currie, I've actually found the text quite differently than my colleagues do. The prior text of the subdivision code was actually quite vague in my mind. It spoke to the character in the surrounding area. And so as I actually walked some neighborhoods with planning commissioners, and we looked at this issue, and it left it to the discretion of whoever was viewing the area as to what constituted surrounding. Could it be one single street? Could it be an entire block? Could it be the whole neighborhood? In this revision, we're talking about not only the area that we're looking at, but also adjacent and adjoining lots. So there is spatial confinement here that wasn't expressed in the prior. In addition, there is now the notion of unreasonable detriment to the use and enjoyment of other properties, the introduction of possible harm to an individual or an adjacent or adjoining lot, which was not expressed in previous-- in the previous subdivision code. So I think that this does narrow it down and provides greater discretion for the Planning Commission to make that finding. In regards to Mr. Selich's recommendation and Ms. Gardner's comments to that, I too believe that the side yard setback is an issue that should be reviewed. I don't know that I'm in a position, even as a planner, to make that recommendation now, or is it in our interest to let our Planning Commission, the ones who actually act on these things regularly, to send that matter back to them and get a precise recommendation from them on, is it a whole number? Is it the actual three foot by three foot by three foot? Or is it better to have a proportional representation of whatever that side yard setback ought to be based on, the size of the lots to be merged? I think that that we would be better served as the policymakers to hear the more technical side from the Planning Commission on that particular issue. Thank you.
My assumption was that the zoning code changes would have to go back to the Planning Commission for consideration. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. I think-- correct me if I'm wrong, staff, but I think one of the reasons that the Planning Commission-- I think they looked at the setback issues, but I think that they felt that, from reading the minutes and discussions with some of the commissioners, that they felt that the-- having the setbacks, taking the setback approach would create further inequities in the zoning code, which would probably create more problems than dealing with the situation of the few lot mergers we have and dealing with them within the context of a policy. Would that be a correct statement, or--
Yes.
Correct me if I stood that wrong.
No. One of the issues we're dealing with is, would this apply to lots that are a larger width, in which you would make those lots non-conforming? So then applying it to only newly merged lots, well, then over time, you could have a situation where a lot that was merged prior to that amendment would be allowed lesser setbacks and more floor area than a property close by that was merged more recently.
And I'd just make one other comment. I mean, if we do decide to send it back to the Planning Commission, we ought to give them better direction. I don't think they had-- they were sitting there trying to figure out what they thought we wanted to do. I'll just say, from my standpoint, I'm fine with the Planning Commission's recommendations. I don't think that we get that many of these lot mergers that create the kind of problem we had with that last situation, and it just seems something that really needs to be dealt with on an individual basis. Anytime you try and set up rules, you're always going to create more places where the rule's not in effect, and you're going to need more exceptions. So I'm fine with the Planning Commission recommendation.
I agree with that.
I probably am, too. Let me take the moment here to open this up for public comment. Is there any member in the public who'd like to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the city council. Does someone want to proffer a motion and get us started here?
I'll move the Planning Commission recommendation.
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion?
Can we clarify, again, the Planning Commission recommendation? What is it that we're--
An amendment to Title 19 to change finding number five of Section 1968.030H, and no additional amendments to the zoning code.
All right. Please vote.
With Councilmember Gardner voting no, the motion carries six one.
Item 18, direction to staff on various issues.
So, Mr. Mayor, council members, this is one that I think Councilmember Gardner asked for last time. Two items. We're just asking if you'd like us to spend more time and research them. The two items are, should we adjust our fees for nonprofits that might use especially this community room? I don't know if you wanted to expand it to other facilities.
Just that I've been contacted by a couple of nonprofits and community groups, and they were disappointed that the costs are what they are. And I was wondering if it would be worthwhile to develop some criteria. I mean, obviously, we don't want to just have a free-for-all, but some criteria so that those groups that we feel present a community benefit, or however we want to define it, could have a discount, not go free. We have costs and everything, but they would pay a lesser rate than, say, a commercial group when they use it. So that was what I wanted to know, if we wanted to discuss.
And the second item being ordinance that would limit picketing or demonstration--
Right. We had an instance, and again, this has nothing to do with the topic, but to go into a residential area, because you have expressed something, is not only difficult for you, but it's difficult for your neighbors. And apparently, there are some cities that have been able to deal with this more adroitly, and I would like to see us provide better protection for the residential areas, so that people are not subject to that sort of thing.
All right. I personally be supportive of both of those items. Have anyone come back?
As would I.
Me, too.
Number three.
Yay, I won something.
All right. Is there a public comment on this matter? Would anyone in the public like to speak? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back. I think what would be-- and what would be a motion then to direct staff to bring both of these items back for--
So moved.
Please vote.
The motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
Motion for reconsideration?
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none, we are adjourned.
I had to look at my watch to see if the clock had stopped.